Hey Marcia.
Yes.
Uh Craig just called me, said he needed the zoom link again.
Okay, I will resend it right now.
Steve, how you doing?
Hi, everybody.
Hey. Hi.
Michael.
Hello.
Hello. Seems like every time we see you there, it gets more cluttered. I don't know.
Hello, District Council.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. Where are you?
That's an old, you know, remember Elton John, say good morning to the night.
Yes.
Unless they see the sky, but they can't, and that is why they are not if it's light outside or.
Um. Stick to legal and not singing, sir.
Yeah, unless you want to sing, I'm still standing.
Yeah, well, you know, right, there, you know, the definition in my book of a lawyer is is a person who has no hidden talents.
It is seven AM and I believe we have all arrived.
Thank you, Marcia.
And I'm going to start the recording.
Thank you, Marcia. Welcome to the Maraga Arinda Fire District Regular Board Meeting, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'll call the meeting to order. Marcia, can we have a roll call, please?
Director Bates.
Here.
Director Dan Ziger.
Here.
Director Jex.
So I'm going on.
Okay.
There he is.
You hear me?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
Director Jorgens.
Here.
President Donner.
Here. Steve, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
He's chief isn't here, Mike.
Okay. Uh Director Dan Ziger, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Into the. For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
God.
Invisible. Justice for.
Justice for.
Thank you. Consent Agenda Item two point one, adopt resolution twenty-two dash twenty-nine, re-ratifying findings and determining a need to continue holding remote meetings by teleconference.
I I just make one, one comment on this. I just read today in the paper that the governor has declared the emergency over at the end of February, so. Good change to read back in person.
I heard that is as well. Marcia, do you have any received any public comment?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
President Donner.
Yes, sir.
Um I, as I said last week or last month, I would move that we go back to in person.
Okay. Um, thank you for your comment, Director Bates. I think we're gonna wait till the official lift from the governor. And we're gonna follow suit like other entities and agencies and districts are doing. Any other comment from board members?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
I can pause public comment?
He did.
Okay, thanks. Good. I'll second it.
Thank you, Marcia. Can we get a vote, please?
Director Bates.
No.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens.
Hi.
President Donner.
Hi. I'm gonna open up public comment for items not on the agenda. Marcia, have we received any correspondence or have any hands raised?
Yes, we did receive a one written public comment today. Um, the written public comment is five minutes long.
Okay, Marcia, I will allow you to extend the time and read this letter, please.
Okay, the public comment is from Kelly Morris Nichols. Good evening. I reached out to the board last month for any help possible to resolve my work comp lien issues. And be able to recover my settlement from an accident on duty that retired me in December of twenty twelve. As I had previously mentioned, I settled in March prior to going to trial. Before settling, we contacted MOFD's counsel, asking for a number that they had in mind. We got no response. I should also mention that over a year ago before redacted, redacted, MOFD and myself. Were headed to trial, a settlement offer was made. We could not again get any sort of number from MOFD's counsel, which forced us to all go to trial. In trial, MOFD was suing alongside of myself, redacted and redacted in hopes of recouping some of their work comp costs. MOFD lost the green sheets and after accident reports from the incident on Highway twenty-four, December second, two thousand and twelve. Showed negligence on MOFD's behalf and freeway responses were changed as well as OAGs and policies and procedures. MOFD still has the opportunity to appeal that outcome. I am extremely frustrated as this has been long enough. I had my knee replaced in July and used my own insurance, not work comp, even though it had been approved through Athens. That right there is a credit of around fifty K. Shortly after my last email to the Board of Directors. MOFD's counsel reached out to my attorneys in hopes of resolution. They were scheduled to meet twice and finally had an exchange. I received a call and an email from my attorney regarding their proposal. It was that I keep all the settlements awarded to me and walk away from future medical care work comp. I agreed. I do not have more surgeries. I do have more surgeries in a lifetime of care needed. But I was okay with using my own insurance from there on out. I was told that my attorney would touch base with my work comp attorney and they would all get everything in writing. This was on a Friday. Next thing I hear on Monday from my attorney is that now they have changed their mind. Still would not give us what number they had in mind. Well, guess what? They have a number now and it's three hundred K. This is the most frustrating thing I've ever dealt with. Perhaps if I had known any amount they were looking for. And it was that much, I would have never settled. If you all would like to know, we settled for eight hundred and ninety K, of which forty percent plus attorney fees went to my attorneys. So MOFD believes that they should receive three hundred K and I would get about a hundred K. Out of this and everything I have gone through. That's unbelievable. This case has been going on for ten years. During that time, MOFD's original counsel, Hori Han, has retired. As well as one of my attorneys. The attorney I'm still dealing with told me a couple of weeks after all this. That he is now working for free and has never had to deal with anything like this in all his years. He told me he could, he could not keep helping me. And I should contact my work comp attorney. I did so and he told me this is a third party lawsuit. And has nothing to do with him or work comp. He reached out to my attorney and said it is unfair that he got paid and is now done with helping me out. That has since passed, but I'm certain you can all understand my frustration. The last time I sent an email to the board, I caught a lot of grief and was threatened by MOFD's counsel. I'm feeling that I am being retaliated against and harassed. I sent out an email to all MOFD retirees. I asked if any of the men who had been disability retired and awarded any money had ever had to pay back work comp fees. I've had several responses and not one has had to go through any of this. I'm happy to send copies of my email responses. I'm a Maraga native. My family has been very active in the fire department for over fifty years. I loved my job so much and was very devoted to this community. I find it hard to believe that the citizens I grew up with and was sacrificed for would be okay with all of this. I do not. I don't want to have to explore other legal routes, but I'm finding myself backed into a corner at this point. Thanks for listening. And to note for clarification, the MOFD attorney referenced is the workers' comp attorney. And that concludes the written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia.
And we do not have any hands raised.
Uh John, do you have a comment on this letter or? Should we?
So first, yes, just a couple of things. I mean, I don't have a lot of comment because. Saved is. Roughly an hour or two ago. First, I just want to be clear with the board. I think you, the board is aware of this. The attorney she's referring to is not an attorney for MOFD. It is and the attorney for our third party. Uh carrier, workers' comp carrier, uh who you spoke with, he was here a month ago. And so. Um, you know, the underlying issue which which she talked about last time is that, you know, this is not in our control. This is a, this is our carrier. We can obviously contact them again, and I will based on this letter. And 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 try to understand a little bit more what's going on right now. But I do want to emphasize that this is not our claim and and we don't have any direct control over it.
So this is, just to be clear, so this is not a MOFD. The legal counsel going after any part of this workman's comp settlement. This is the third party insurer. That is.
That's correct. And and you know, probably Gloria and maybe you want to just, you know, just, just explain that a little bit more.
Certainly, the district's a member of FASIS, which is fire agency self-insurance system. It's a joint powers authority which is made up of 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 lots of different fire districts. So the fastest board and the, it has control over this item, not the Maraga Arinda Fire Board. And so we have been in communication with the fastest attorney and so forth, and the claim is working through their system.
I I'll be happy, obviously, in light of this most recent correspondence to reach out to that lawyer again, who was here last month and. And get a progress report on 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 where they are and try to understand if there's anything we we can do. But I don't believe, well, I know that we don't have any control over over this claim directly. The claim belongs to FASIS, not to us.
Yeah, you know, I think this collectively, you know, I'll speak for myself and maybe most of the board or all of the board, you know, this is. One of our members that it was a pretty horrible accident on Highway twenty-four. I remember it well. You know, she was permanently disabled and. You know, I think whatever we can do to help her settle this in her behalf. Um, we should uh fight for her and what she's gone through and the sacrifices that she's made in a lifetime of pain and injuries.
Well, I will reach out to them and try to understand what's going on and see, you know, what if any influence we can have on trying to get them to a conclusion.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from any directors?
I just, just that I agree with you, President Donner.
Definitely want to treat everybody fairly.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. All right, I will close public comment. On items not on the agenda. Four point one, brief information only reports related to meetings attended by directors at director's expense. Anybody have? Any meetings?
Oh.
Okay. Questions and informational comments from board members and staff?
No.
Moving on to four point three. Thank you, Marcia. Communications received.
Uh good evening, directors. There are communications received.
Uh. For our Marshall Isaacs, you cut out there for a second. You said there were no.
That's correct. No communications received, sir.
Okay, thank you. Four point four, fire chief updates.
Good evening, directors. I'll handle this for Chief Wintaker this evening. We will start with the finance report by Mary.
Good evening, directors. I will start with the strike team reimbursement update. We still have one hundred and twenty thousand dollars outstanding from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Those are two invoices related to the Calf Canyon incident. Everything else has been paid. And the estimated for twenty-two, twenty-three to date is five hundred and thirty-six, four ninety-five outstanding. And that's just based on F forty-fives that we have received, and we still have some F forty-fives coming in. Um, the only other out, uh, we did um receive a recent payment on October fourth for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, so payments are still coming in. Other items, our audit has been scheduled for the week of December twelfth, and the final audit report is expected in February of twenty twenty-three. And that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Thank you for your report. Any questions from any of the directors? Director Jex, this is normally where you.
Yeah.
As something.
Well, just a good question. It says estimated amount. So there have been no filings with regards to two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. We have not filed a request.
Uh, I'm sorry, invoices, you mean, or?
No, we have not submitted a a claim to the state for reimbursement.
Um, well, what happens is we receive the F forty-twos, the and the F forty-twos get sent to OES. OES reviews the F forty-twos, and once they have reviewed them and approved them, they send us an invoice. We sign off on the invoice and then we send it back, send it.
Okay, so there have been no invoices received from them and.
There have been a couple of invoices received, but the bulk of them, the bulk of the F forty-twos are still outstanding.
Okay.
Yeah, this includes invoices received and other F forty-twos outstanding.
Okay.
So is the, is the twenty-one, twenty-two number, it says estimated, so we're not just waiting to get paid, we're waiting for them to approve them still?
No, actually, that should be actual for twenty-one, twenty-two, because we have received all the invoices. And they've approved, we've approved the invoices and they just haven't processed payment on to Calf Canyon invoices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Directors, we'll move on to the HR report from Christine.
Good evening, directors. Tonight I have a recruitment update. So first off is the firefighter paramedic trainee recruitment. We are currently wrapping up the final steps in the background process with our three candidates and will be scheduling an EMS orientation. And five call evaluation within the next couple of weeks. Uh recruitment for fire inspector plans examiner has been released and is scheduled to close on October thirty-first. Next, one of our three fire fuels mitigation specialists has resigned his position to accept another. To accept an offer with another agency. His last day with MO, with MOFD was this past Friday on October fourteenth. So a recruitment will be open shortly to fill the vacancy. And finally, the battalion chief recruitment, it's an internal only recruitment. The ninety-day application period will is scheduled to close on November sixteenth, and we will be hosting an exam process in early December. And this concludes my update. Thank you.
Question, uh, the fuel mitigation specialist, this position is turned over before?
Yes, yeah, we we've had several, you know, several turnovers in this, in this position.
Mm-hmm. Uh, what's the reason for the turnover?
Um, they're basically, um, this is like a kind of like a stepping stone position for folks, so they've, um, you know, moved on to, you know. You know, other positions like the person that just resigned, he's gonna become a code enforcement officer with the city of San Mateo.
Okay, so it's a change in position for the individual.
Right.
Yeah, and then also Director Jex, this also, you know, a lot of these uh. People that are fuel mitigation specialists, some of them have desires to be firefighters. And they also, it's also a segue since they're working with the department to segue into a career as a pro.
Career, okay. Yeah, I mean, it'd be great.
It's a transient, it's a pretty transient uh position historically with the district and and I think industry wide.
Do we make an effort to try to groom these people and find the ones that we especially want and offer them opportunities in our organization?
If I could jump in there, sir, yes, we we've done that. If we have the opportunity to get them into our organization, we will absolutely do that. Most of our fuels mitigation specialists aren't. Qualified paramedics, so they're coming in at the entry level, getting the training and experience here and then. Jumping on into fire suppression and other agencies where you don't have to be a paramedic.
Yeah.
President Donna, Director Dan Ziger, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh Christine, do we already have a uh, an academy lined up for the new firefighter paramedics?
The three.
Yes, so so originally we were, um, we had slots available to us uh with the city of Berkeley, but that fell through. So our training battalion chief is currently working with Livermore Pleasanton to secure uh. The three slots in their academy that's scheduled to start. They don't have a firm date yet, but sometime in December, January.
Okay, and and another question, uh, maybe this is for Fire Marshal Isaacs. Um, losing that, I mean, I, I know we're, we're at the end of uh, the, you know, high fire severity uh time. But you losing that fuel mitigation specialist, how do you see that impacting, you know, what the work that we're doing?
Um, it'll definitely, we'll feel it, sir, but we have good staff there. We'll be able to, you know, overcome that challenge. Um, as you said, the season's starting to wind down a little bit. The inspections and the complaints are dropping off for preparing to start for um. The chipping season and fuel reduction work, so I I think we'll be able to keep moving forward um without a noticeable slowdown.
Okay. All right. It's and uh, maybe this is for Christine. I have one more question. Uh. Is there any preference at all given to especially these non-sworn positions to local district residents?
Um, we do not have a policy in place for that at this time.
All right. Thank you.
All right, directors, we'll go on to the fire marshal report. After my fire marshal report, I'll give the update to the Home Hardening Grant Program and the Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break Project. Uh, to date, we've had ninety-eight dead tree complaints, one hundred and seventy-four exterior hazard abatement complaints. Uh, property transfer inspections, four hundred and seventy-two, initial pass, one fifty-six, uh, three hundred and sixteen failed. Again, that's mostly to that non-combustible two-foot zone around the structures. Um, exterior hazard inspections that September first, supposed to be to September thirtieth, so this is the report for last month. Four hundred and twenty-one assessments and re-inspections, two hundred and fifty-three passed, failed, one hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, zero thirty-day notices, number of cases closed, two hundred and fifty-three. We have uh, three hundred and forty-three cases remaining. Um, we're working hard to get those closed out as we start to transition out of fire season and into the holiday season. Um, one hundred and four pre-citations, uh, thirty-nine citations. They were all for exterior hazard abatement violations. Uh, no chimp chipping yet. As I said, we're preparing, that's on the very near future. We're hoping by the middle of next month, the um. The chipper will be ready. We're gonna send it in. It's a brand-new chipper. It's due for its fifty-hour service. Um, we're gonna get that in, so it's ready to go for the chipping season. We did receive two requests today for chipping. In the uh, Olinger Canyon Valley Hill area. We did do one E occupancy inspection and it did pass. Uh, haven't done any of the R twos, R ones. Um, you can see plan reviews still keeping steady and keeping us busy there. Uh, current projects, still working on the evacuation route, re-inspections, um, educating the property owners there. The biggest thing we're seeing is the fifteen-foot um air gap with trees overhanging the roadway. Uh, property transfer inspections, complaints are still coming in, but those, we've seen a noticeable drop-off. Uh, the county fire code is pretty much wrapped up. Each agency has taken their fire code um back to their boards. Or their elected officials for review. I worked with our legal team today. We spent um about five hours going over our code. Um, making sure we dotted all the i's and crossed. i's and crossed all the t's, and Chief will be able to present that out shortly. And I continue to work with the Zone Zero Work Group. Uh, next slide, please, Marshall.
But, yeah, before we leave that slide, this is Director Jex's question. Uh, on the, uh, under the exterior hazard, uh, inspections, it shows that there's still twenty outstanding from twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
What, why, why, why so long, I guess?
Um, working through education to get the, the folks to do what they, um, need to do, and we've, uh, most of those have been cited for additional complaints, so it keeps the case open.
Okay, uh, with the number for two thousand twenty-two, I guess that's just current activity?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
Fire Marshal Isaacs, so.
Yes, sir.
Do these, you know, there isn't really, you know, if it's homes, if everybody kind of knows roughly, they're all sort of the same size, but we have a number of very large landowners. Are, are there any of those that have been, you know, are we having good compliance on our large parcel orders? You know, there are, some people have hundreds of acres.
Yes, sir, it, it, just like with every other, you know, the smaller properties or the homes, we see some of the large, uh, property owners, you know, jump on this and are compliant by the due date of June first, and there's others that drag their feet, and there's still some that we have to issue citations to get them to comply.
Um, President Donna, Director Danziger here. Um, uh, uh, Fire Marshal, I, I, I'm curious about the, uh, the E occupancies. So school's been in session for, you know, about two months now, at least, public schools, I'm not sure about private. Is it common to, uh, not have those inspected two months after the school's already started?
Y- yes, sir, the state mandates that we do it on, on a calendar year, so we did it for, um, twenty-one. And we, it was twenty-one, twenty-two when we were doing, so some of them are currently due. Um, I was hoping to have the inspector, um, position hired, so that would be a great training opportunity, um, to get that person out there, uh, but since that hasn't happened yet, um, I will work with, uh, WC three, and we will go out there and we will, um, get those ones that are due.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Uh, next slide, please, Marshall. And directors, this is, um, every month we show where the majority of the violations are, still see a lot, you know, the top three, the three and fifteen, uh, clearance, uh, completely clearing parcels less than an acre, and then dead tree material. And then the, our home hardening grant, um, has been going strong, a lot of, uh, it's been well-received and I would say, um, fair amount of requests. We ordered eighteen hundred feet of the bushfire mesh fence, um, material, we've, uh, have eight hundred feet remaining, thirty-plus requests, we have received four requests for reimbursement that I will be working with Gloria Ann and Mary to make sure we have all the proper documentation, so we can get those, uh, requests for reimbursement out. Um, a lot of good feedback from the homeowners on the bushfire, uh, mesh that we ordered, they like it, it, it's easy to manipulate and, um, do the work on their own and not have to hire a contractor, so that's been, uh, real positive, uh, feedback there. Are there any questions the board has on the?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question regarding this, uh, for our marshal Isaacs.
Yes.
This is an initial, uh, pilot program grant for us, and we allotted five hundred thousand dollars, uh, towards this grant. Any idea how much of that has been used up?
Um, I do not have that number, sir.
Okay.
High in the amount.
Would, uh.
Expensive.
I, I, I wondered if, uh, administrative manager would have that number?
It's four bucks a square foot, the, the eighteen hundred feet are three feet wide, so, you know.
Right, well, we've gone through several pilots, I understand, I was just curious just to know how, how the, how the, uh, grant is doing and, and how it's going with the funding.
Sir, I'll work with Mary and make sure we get a, a solid number, and, um, we will get that to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and I have one more cr- question on that.
Twenty-five thousand dollars so far.
I have another question on, um, on, on that grant program. Um, a- as I'm, uh, as I'm in the community the last few weeks, um, I've, people have kind of asked me about it, but it, it seems like to me, and, and just looking at whatever I see, and I'm probably more informed than most people on, uh, on activities going on with MOFD, I don't see a lot of, uh, public information on that program. And could, you, you think you could go over a little bit how we're advertising that to people besides saying it's on the website? That, are we doing social media, are we doing any, anything else?
Um, so far, sir, we put it on the website, we've reached out to our Firewise communities and our, um, fire-adapted community ambassadors. Uh, we wanted that initial feedback to make sure the product that we got was a good product, we didn't want to blast that out, um, and really push some, if it wasn't going to work. So is that feedback's coming to us that, hey, this is a good product, it's easy to work with, people are liking it, and we evaluate, um, our internal systems, we will go ahead and, um, really push that information out uh, to the community.
Good, I'd really like to see that.
Yes, sir.
We were also going to be looking into, uh, if there were any possible all-metal, uh, gutter protectors, so that we could be subsidizing those also, or incenting those.
Yes, sir, we had a community member drop by this afternoon and show us a product, I need to do some research to make sure that's listed on the Office of the State Fire Marshal's, uh, approved, uh, material list, and if it is, we will also advertise that.
That's great.
Uh, uh, Fire Marshal, this director Danziger, just because you just mentioned that you'll, you know, you'll get the actual cost. Can we, when we do that, can we actually get the cost of not only for us purchasing the mesh, but also how many applications we've gotten for, uh, for the, uh, re- rebates?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Fire Marshal Isaacs regarding the Home Hardening Grant Program?
Next slide, please, Marshall. Directors, here's the, uh, footprint in the work areas of the Tunnel East Bay Hills, uh, Fuel Break, that was a grant through CalFire's Fire Prevention. We have six work areas listed, um, we originally started with five, but we broke out work area two from work area six, um, just to make it more manageable. We have done work in work area two and portions of work area one. Um, those have been an initial entry, first entry into areas where we've cut brush, limbed up trees, we've created piles, so we can go back once we have favorable weather this fall and winter and burn those piles and do additional, um, cutting and fuels mitigation in those areas. Um, those areas, we were allowed to do work because they are on East Bay mudland, and East Bay mud has the environmental and sequoia documents done, so we follow their habitat conservation plan. We currently have our environmental consultant, uh, Sequoia, who worked with us on the North Aranda Shaded Fuel Break. They are doing our environmental sequoia work for the, uh, portions of the grant that will take place on private property, those are work areas four, three, and portions of work area five. Um, a small portion of five, all of work area six, work area two, and work area one will be conducted on the East Bay mudland. Um, as a matter, just a highlight, there was a grant in the Bay Area um, through CalFire that was, had their work stopped via court, um, because they didn't, um, complete their environmental documents properly, and somebody was able to stop that in court. So we're working through our consultants to make sure that, you know, we're doing our due diligence and that nobody will be able to, you know, take us to, anybody can go to court, but that our, um, documents are done properly, we've taken, um, the proper amount of time and really dotted the i's, crossed the t's and haven't left anything to chance there. So that's the main focus of the work right now. Uh, that should be done, the environmental, early spring, and then, um, we have contractors waiting, that once we receive that okay back from our consultant, we'll be able to turn to and get our crews out there and start working on this. And with our history on the North Aranda Shaded Fuel Break, this is a three-year grant process, we know we can get in there in a short timeframe and, uh, get this accomplished.
Question, um, Director Jex, uh, we show that there are two, uh, work area fours?
Yes, sir, the, those are split, uh, it's one work area, but, um, due to the homes and everything right there, we split it, um, split that up.
Okay.
It's still, we kept it the same work area because it's, um, private property, and it just operationally made sense to do it that way. And that upper work area four will tie into a grant, the, uh, Contra Cross County Fire Protection District received from CalFire that will take off and head around, uh, Rossmore. So it, uh, from a regional perspective, our grant's going to tie into another agency's fuel, or our fuel break will tie into another agency's fuel break.
And Fire Marshal Isaacs, this is President Donner, and this is, we're kind of following the same criteria as the Aranda Shaded Fuel Break, this is, uh, a hundred feet to five hundred feet in width in all these work areas?
Yes, sir, um, work area six on the top of Flicker Ridge has some very sensitive environmental concerns. So we're working with the East Bay Mud Biologist, our environmental consultants. Those areas won't go over the hundred feet, um, fuel break due to those. Um, the areas where we can, uh, take a bigger bite, if you will, we absolutely will, um, you know, make a bigger shaded fuel break in those areas.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this is Director Danziger, so, um, I just don't recall, maybe I'm just not remembering, but do we actually have somebody managing this for us from outside MOFD like we did for the North Aranda Shaded Fuel Break?
We have that in the budget, sir, uh, two positions, a project coordinator and assistant project coordinator. We haven't brought those positions on. We want, we only have so many days to use those positions, uh, based on the budget that we submitted. So we want to bring them on when we're going to be working five days a week and having multiple crews out there, uh, to best utilize those resources. So right now, um, Chief and I are heading this up, um, but is once we get those environmental documents back and we're ready to really, uh, turn the crews loose on this, that's when we'll bring those positions onboard.
And, and just to refresh my memory, um, and I see Christine is still on also. Do we, do we, uh, do the, the, the regular, uh, process to hire those people like, like we do for any other position? Just curious, the process.
I think, I think the previous, uh,
I don't remember.
Or con- contract positions.
Yeah, exactly. I think so, too.
Yes, the previous position was an hourly position, a non-benefited.
Non-benefited, so that means it, it, we don't advertise it, we could just select somebody, is that what you're saying?
Um, I, I can't answer this, that question right now, I would have to look at the, um, at the grant contract.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, sir, I wasn't here when the North Aranda started, I, I came in at the tail end of that, so I'm not sure how we got, um, our project coordinator for that. I know, um, that individual did an outstanding job, and I would love to, you know, see us be able to get that individual again to, uh, you know, get this started and moving in the right direction.
Okay, is, is that the plan, is to, uh, have the same project manager as we use for the North Aranda Shaded Fuel Break?
As long as we can bring that person back and we're following all our HR rules and grant rules, sir, yes.
That's just a, this is Director Jex, uh, you mentioned that some of the, uh, piles of, of material will be dealt with in the, uh, winter time or, or, you know, when the weather changes. Is that burning, or is that going to be mulching, or how, how, when you talk about disposition?
Um, the piles that are remaining, sir, our hope is that we, the weather will change and we'll be able to get out there and to burn those piles. And there are areas of the, um, fuel break where burning's not the best, uh, treatment method, and so we would chip those and rebroadcast the chips back out onto the landscape, or if that's not desirable, we can haul the chips off.
Okay. Um, and, and I, I did want to point out too that there was, uh, some, some mistypings in the agenda, so under this, um, under E, uh, the four-point-four E, um, there needs to be some corrections to the title there.
Yeah, yes, sir, I just noticed that thing.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, and then one last thing, directors, the, this time of the year usually brings this question up from members of the public, is, you know, how are we looking on fire season, are we out of fire season? Um, and it really depends, the rain, if we see that early onset of, um, rain, you know, three to four inches, we can, um, you know, they safely expect the, that we're not going to see any large, um, rapidly spreading fires, but if that rain is pushed back and we get the wind events that, um, you know, usually occur this time of year, and we've been lucky, we haven't had any red flag wind events yet. Um, you know, we could be right back into a significant fire weather, so it really depends on when the rains hit for us, uh, fingers crossed that we get some early wetting rains that will, you know, change the fuel moisters. Uh, into my report unless there's any questions. Okay, I will turn it over to Chief Lambert for the operations report.
Hi, good evening, directors and members of the public, my name is Lucas Lambert, I'm, uh, Battalion Chief with Maraga Aranda Fire District, uh, responsible for operations, and I'll be giving, uh, this evening's operational update. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we'll begin with our open house that took place on October first, uh, the public was invited to join the Maraga Aranda Fire District for our fall open house at Station Forty-One. Uh, firefighters served a pam- pancake breakfast, demonstrated vehicle extrication, and showed off some of the district's specialized equipment. Um, everyone had a wonderful morning, thanks to the support we received from, um, organizations like Rescue One Foundation, the La Miranda Community Emergency Response Team, American Red Cross, CalFire Sunshine Station Crew, um, MOFD Communication Support Unit, the Maraga Police Department, the, uh, Fire Prevention Staff, uh, Aranda Firewise Council, MOFD's, um, Fire Adaptive Community Ambassadors, and of course, our MOFD, uh, Staff Professional Firefighters Association. And, uh, for mention, uh, proceeds from this event, um, will go on to, uh, to be donated to the Elisa Anne Rouge Burn Foundation. That was a great event, uh, we look forward to this every year, um, and certainly look forward to the next one. Thank you, next slide. Uh, next incident, uh, this was on October seventh at approximately two twenty in the morning, uh, while crews responded to the reports of a vehicle off the roadway in the area of Pinehurst Road outside of the community of Canyon. Upon arrival, crews located a vehicle approximately one hundred feet down an embankment, um, with driver trapped in the vehicle. Um, our, our crews established a low-angle rope rescue and made access to the patient. Uh, the patient was extricated from the vehicle and hoisted to the roadway, um, with the technical rescue system where the patient, uh, received, uh, treatment from our, from our firefighter paramedics, uh, sustained during the incident, um, or accident. Um, fortunately, uh, uh, the outcome of the patient was good, our firefighters, uh, no injuries sustained during this incident. Next slide, please. Um, this incident, uh, this happened on October eleventh at approximately, uh, seven forty in the morning, um, while a dump truck, uh, was traveling down Wilder Road, uh, towards the freeway on-ramp. Uh, when the driver lost control of the vehicle, flipping it, it's on its side. Um, the patient was extricated from the vehicle, and, uh, as you can see here from the pictures, uh, the material on the ground was treated, is treated, uh, as a. Uh, as a hazardous material, um, a combination of uh, hydraulic fluid and diesel fluid leaking from the vehicle. Um, the, the hazmat was mitigated by crews on scene. The driver was treated and released uh, from injuries sustained from the incident. Next slide, please. Uh, MOFD has experienced a significant increase to public education events throughout our, throughout our district. Uh, crews enjoyed um, engaging um, with our community. Over the years, following the COVID nineteen restrictions that have previously prevented. Our staff from uh, engaging in these uh, in-person events um, with our communities. MOFD is always very thankful for these opportunities to attend these visits. Um, educate the public, have an opportunity to engage with our communities. Uh, these pictures here, this is actually at the Maraga Royale during grandparents' day at our, one of our senior care facilities. Um, and we have uh, one of our uh, uh, high school sports teams there that joined as well. Um. This was a great event. This was one of many that we've uh, seen in a, a significant increase um, that we've certainly enjoyed. Um, just like our pancake breakfast. Uh, next slide, please. And uh, this year, this is a, an, a uh, just an update for the uh. For the folks, um, a couple of months ago, we, we recently graduated a Berkeley Academy with two firefighter. Paramedics um, on probation status. Uh, this is a, a demonstration um, with one of our uh, truck companies. As we practiced uh, uh, a truck evolution. Um, and next slide, please. Um, and, and here is, uh, this is a vertical ventilation on one of our roof props um, in the rear of uh, Station Forty One in Maraga. Um, this is uh, one of many evolutions that uh, our firefighter paramedics will be practicing over the course of their probationary process. Um, and then tested upon. Uh, the tests uh, throughout their eighteen month probation. Um, uh, go anywhere from EMS skills uh, to practical skills as you see here. Um, on vertical ventilation uh, to map skills where we uh, have blank maps and, and firefighter. Probationary firefighter paramedics get tested on uh, streets and addresses throughout our district. Um, and then uh, and, and tested um, both in uh, a manipulative form and written forms. And uh, so this is a vertical ventilation, as you can see, um, stages one, um, on the uh, aerial truck. Um, exiting the, the ladder, sounding the roof to make sure that uh, that the, there's no structural members that are compromised. Um, locating the hole on light, on item number three, uh, and communicating with uh, interior crews to make sure that uh. Uh, locating the area or location of the fire below them. And then finally, number four, where uh, the hole is cut and uh, communication is had with uh, interior crews to punch through and release uh. Superheated gases through vertical ventilation. And next slide, please. Uh, and this was, uh, this happened recently on October, uh, October seventeenth in the early mo-. In the uh, correction, in the afternoon, um, a vehicle traveling twenty-four eastbound. Uh, towing a trailer overturned, um, blocking all lanes of traffic. Uh, upon arrival. There were two patients uh, that were trapped in the vehicle. Our crews made quick work of extricating the patients. Um, patients were, were treated and transported, uh, where they are expected to make a full recovery, fortunately. Um, but uh, this, just a reminder, as we see, um, and as Farm Marshal Isaacs had mentioned, um, any weather changes and, and certainly any. Uh, wedding weather that would affect roadways, um, we start to see a significant increase in. Um, in our roadways with uh, vehicle incidents. Next slide, please.
Chief Lambert, I have, I have one question regarding twenty-four, if I could just interrupt for a second.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, you know, just in reflecting back to uh, the letter that we heard at the beginning of this. Uh, meeting, protocol for you guys, uh, does the ladder truck go on all freeway incidents to block lanes? Or is that an engine duty? Or what is, what is the protocol for MOFD for blocking and making our firefighters safe?
Good question. Uh, at minimum, we, uh, our response for a vehicle accident uh, on the roadway. Uh, is uh, two engines, um, or I should say two pieces of apparatus, um, typically being one engine and truck. An ambulance and a battalion chief. And uh, and so those apparatus work as protection. Um, certainly a ladder truck is, uh, our ladder truck is uh, fifty-eight foot long. Um, it allows for protection of our scene, um, and, and uh, ability, of course, with the tools that are, that we have on the vehicles or on the apparatus as well. Um, so yes, they certainly do protect. Uh, we've recently adopted, uh, working collaboratively with all agencies within the county. To work with uh, CHP, it's to, and to slow the flow of traffic uh, countywide. Uh, we made a push um, with, with other agencies and collaboratively inter-agency uh, to control the flow. To slow traffic uh, with, with devices or measures like a, a rolling load block. With CHP where they can start, in this case, on the west side of the Colacott Tunnel. Weaving in and out of traffic to slow the flow of all traffic uh, before the incident.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. And last, uh, just a, an update, we do still have uh, personnel assigned to the mosquito incident, uh, which is just east of Forest Hill. And although a majority of the fire is out, um, efforts have shifted now uh, to fuel uh, to uh, fuel suppression repair. Um, and during this time, it, it's a, it's an effort by crews, um, contractors, heavy equipment to uh, to. To, to do inform, or to uh, reduce the hazards that um, were caused by the, by the incident. For instance, uh, the hazard treatment uh, mitigation, removing trees that were burned during the incident. Um, and then also repairing the earth to, as best we can, um. Rehabilitating dozer lines and hand lines that may have been in place and constructing water blar- water bars. Um, so that uh, it prevents water um, erosion of the soil. Um, so that's where the focus remains on the mosquito incident. We currently have uh. Uh, one firefighter assigned as a fireline paramedic and uh, and one engineer assigned as uh. As assisting with the GIS role. Um, recently, safety officer Captain Mike Lacy has returned and. Uh, a radio communications tech Captain John Ford has returned. Um, and, and I'll leave uh, with just a, a quick kind of PSA um, to reinforce Fire Marshal Isaacs. Um, and the, the million dollar question, as we enter this time of year. Uh, many people think that our, our threat to uh, to large destructive fires um. Is, is uh, diminishing. Um, and, and I would argue against that. This is uh, the time of year that we see significant. Wind events, which are the drivers behind large um, incidents. And uh, and encourage everybody to not let their guard down. And um, things that we, uh, that we mention every board meeting. Um, like uh, maintaining our vegetation clearance, um, removing combustibles next to home. Signing up for uh, the CWS system, knowing your evacuation routes and staying in tune with uh, with current and predicted weather patterns is important. And uh, and just as a reminder, I'm sure uh, President Donner can, can speak to this as well. Uh, the uh, Oakland Hills Fire, the tunnel fire happened October twenty-first, nineteen ninety-one. Um, which was a, a very large, arguably the most destructive fire um, in our state's his- history. So um. Please uh, want to remind everybody, do not let your guard down. Um, the uh, season is unknown. Um, but this is the time of year that we see uh, significant wind events um, that are very destructive fires. And that concludes my operational report. I'll be available for any questions if there are any. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Lambert. Uh, any comments or questions for Chief Lambert?
Just say thank you. Good report.
Thank you for time.
I will open up public comments on items four point one through four point four.
We have one hand raised, Jonathan Goodwin.
Thank you, Marcia. Hello, Jonathan.
Good evening to everyone. I have three questions, one for Chief Lambert, two for Chief Isaacs. They're all pretty straightforward. You want me to just ask them all at once? To keep within the three minute rule or ask them each to uh?
Why don't we start with uh, Chief Lambert?
So Chief Lambert, uh, long time no see. Um, there's a bunch of cars off the road. With nobody in them, been there a long time on Pinehurst and um. Uh, Wildcat Canyon is, I'm quite sure you know that uh, MOFD is, every time a bicyclist sees one. You know, a new bicyclist sees one, uh, you know, the call comes in and there have been, you know, some of these cars have um. You know, had multiple responses. Uh, and again, there's no- nobody home. Um, is there? Have, have, is the district trying to? Find a way to uh, you know, either put notes in the dispatch system or something or other, so that uh, not so much time is wasted on these.
Hey, Jonathan, uh, yes, sir, uh, both um, in, in collaboration with uh, with our communications dispatch center. Um, and uh, and also with uh, CHP. Um, and uh, and they have been noted, uh, they are certainly a burden to us. Um, but I can assure you that when, when it comes down, we, we still investigate every incident. Um, for the possibility of somebody being in there, um, like I mentioned previously, but uh, yes, they have the. The vehicles have been noted, um, and uh, and CHP is also keeping a log.
Right, okay, thank you. I mean, I understand you, you have to. Investigate, but I mean, you know, putting flags on them or something or other. Anyway, I'm glad that's uh, uh, been noted. Uh, Chief Isaacs.
Jonathan, it's, I'm sorry for the interruption and, and just to go back as well, uh, when we're down there, uh, we bring spray paint with us um, and flagging. So we spray paint a, a large X in uh, bright spray paint, um, if we can and uh, as, as visible as we can. So as to indicate that this vehicle has, is, is old, um, and was identified.
I understand, but these have still had repeated. Visits to them, uh, according to what I've heard on dispatch, but uh, you know, there's probably no absolutely perfect way to do this, so. Uh, you know, I'll move on here. Uh, Chief Isaacs, first, I want to note that Chief Lambert's report was much more exciting than yours. Uh, and I say that tongue in cheek. Um, so I have two questions. One, uh, in work area one. Uh, you know, you said the idea was to cut the brush and then burn it when. Conditions allow, yet the, that brush was removed in Maraga. It was only on the ground in. In the unincorporated areas, it just has the appearance, uh, you know, an appearance in reality may be different, but. If it is the appearance of being discriminatory to, to use a, you know, a heavy word. Um, that's my first question and, and the second has to do with, with HEF and Diablo Firesafe. Um, so the three prongs, um, has Cheryl retired or is she still talking about retiring? Have you been attending the meetings? You know, have you been able to work that in, uh, to get a sense of? How these organizations might be going forward? And lastly, do you see that they have a path going forward? Uh, you know, where they can be coherent and, and helpful, because they've always been a, especially Diablo Firesafe has been. Very wobbly on its legs.
Um, yeah, let me tackle these in order and I agree, I'd much rather listen to a operations report than uh, fire prevention. Uh, makes me miss my days on an engine. Um, I can assure you, Jonathan. There was no discrimination or any ill will or intent on where we left the piles. Those were, all the piles being left were evaluated. And it was uh, you know, determined that still the best, best method to remove those piles. Was to wait for the change in weather when we can safely uh, uh, burn it. Uh, if for some reason that changes, we would go out and use a different treatment method there. Um, your second question, I am recently just been uh. Made the Vice President of the Diablo Firesafe Council. Um, I have not uh, heard Cheryl talk about um. Her time remaining, if she's looking to get out, that would be a, a more appropriate question for her to answer. Um, I absolutely think there's a um, place at the table for the, the Firesafe Council. Um, the Firesafe Council, we're still getting grants. We're still able to um, give. Money out to private property owners, to different organizations, to um, go do uh, fuel reduction work. Um, I haven't, just with my busy schedule, been able to attend the number of HEF meetings that I like. We have one. Um, this Friday, um, I still feel that is a valuable resource for us to share ideas and collaborate with our. Partners um, in the world of fire prevention and, and fuels mitigation. And I'm sorry, Jonathan, I forgot your last question.
Well, it was, it was about whether you see a path forward, but if Cheryl's not. I, I mean, she's been talking for two or three years about retiring and if, if that's not. Coming up, then I was, then I'm not so concerned. My concern would be if she disappeared. Uh. It would be, it would, it would, there'd be a big organizational problem, but, but I, I take it that uh, that's not imminent and therefore. Uh, I, I'm not concerned, so I thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you, Jonathan.
That concludes our hands raised and we have not received written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment on items four point one through four point four. Consent agenda items, five point one through five point eight. Any directors have any questions about the consent agenda?
No.
I will open a public comment on consent agendas, consent agenda items, five point one through five point eight.
We do not have any hands raised and we've not received written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment on a consent agenda items, five point one through five point eight. And do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved. Tagged that.
Thank you. Marcia, can we get a vote, please?
Director Bates.
Aye.
Director Danziger.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Aye.
Director Jorgens.
All right, I was a mute, aye.
President Donner.
Aye. Six point one, quarter one, financial update and budget review fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Good evening, directors. A financial update has been prepared through the end of the first quarter. This update covers the time period July one through September thirty, twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. The budget was adopted in June of twenty twenty-two and projected a general fund surplus of two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. The updated projected surplus based on financial information through quarter one is three hundred eighty thousand dollars. Next slide. Looking at revenue on the left side of the slide, property tax revenue is projected to meet budget. Based on quarter one results, ambulance revenue is projected less than budget, a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Ambulance services are seasonal and we could see an increase in transports during the winter months. We'll continue to monitor ambulance revenue throughout the fiscal year and check in again at the mid-year review. Strike team revenue is projected less than budget, two hundred thirty thousand dollars. There is volatility in this revenue category. Plan review revenue is projected less than budget, twenty-nine thousand dollars due to fewer plans submitted to the district. Looking at expenditures on the right side, salaries are projected less than budget, five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. And retirement contributions less than budget, two hundred forty-two thousand dollars. Due to six vacant firefighter paramedic positions and one vacant fire inspector plans examiner position. Staffing overtime is projected to exceed budget, four hundred forty-four thousand dollars due to the six vacant firefighter paramedic positions. Finally, the budget includes three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars for the annual OPEB trust pre-funding contribution. Based on the recently updated actuarial report that was on the consent calendar tonight. The updated contribution is three hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. The projected actuals in this financial update includes the sixteen thousand dollars higher contribution amount for the OPEB contribution. Next slide. This graph reflects general fund revenue by month. The orange line shows budgeted revenue. The orange line shows budgeted revenue. The green line is actual revenue and is trending slightly less than the budget for the first three months of the fiscal year. The red line illustrates prior year revenue. Next slide. This slide depicts general fund expenditures by month. The green line illustrates the first three months of the current year and is below the orange line, which is the budget. The red line represents prior year expenditures by month. This graph details ambulance activity. The vertical bars show the number of transports by month for the current fiscal year and the prior fiscal year. The gray line depicts current year revenue, which is trending slightly less than the blue line, which is the budget. And less than the yellow line, which is last year's revenue. Next slide.
I'm sorry, um, Gloria. So can we go back two slides on, on the revenue by month? Isn't our revenue actually really lumpy? Don't we just get it all in like two shots?
Yes, sorry, go back more, right? You can see, right, we basically went from hardly any, you know, revenue in July. And then in August is when we get a huge property tax amount. So there we go. That's what you're seeing with that big spike.
Okay, and there isn't, okay. It's only, so it's only once a year we get our money.
Well, and then the next spike, right, the next spike then is in December, we get another chunk of property tax revenue.
So does that show up on, I don't see a bump or much of a bump in December. So it's a small bump.
I think the, the, the big chunk is in July and then this, the secondary smaller bump is in December.
Correct.
Lots more, okay.
This graph reflects strike team activity for the last seven years. The blue line shows strike team revenue. The orange line is the strike team overtime expense. The gray columns represent the surplus from strike team activity, which has gone into the general fund. As you can see, the surplus has fluctuated significantly each year. We'll continue to monitor strike team acts to activity as we move through this fiscal year. This graph details current year cash flow compared to the prior year. The district started the fiscal year with eighteen point seven million dollars in unrestricted cash and investments. Next slide. The district started the fiscal year with fifteen point one million dollars in general fund unrestricted fund balance. The projected surplus would increase the unrestricted fund balance to fifteen point five million dollars. Which would exceed the fund about balance policy minimum of seventeen percent and be less than the policy goal of fifty percent. Next slide. The capital projects fund has a projected surplus of one point eight million dollars. Due to a budgeted transfer in from the general fund of three point one million dollars. The purpose of the planned transfer in is to accumulate funds in the capital projects fund. To pay for the future Station Forty One administration remodel project. The transfer is subject to board approval during the mid-year budget review process in February twenty twenty three. The debt service fund has a planned use of reserves of one point seven million dollars due to the final pension obligation bond payment. The pension obligation bonds were paid in full on July one, twenty twenty two. Finally, the tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Brake Fund has a projected surplus of three hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Is that total for the, uh. Project I thought would be higher than that, or is that just this current year?
Just for the current fiscal year.
Current year, okay.
All right. This is the last slide next there to go. Staff will again provide four financial updates this fiscal year. This concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Gloria. Any questions from any directors?
No, just a comment that, uh, you know, good and good at, good news for the state. The not so good for our budget is that we're not having, not having the fires like we, like we, uh. Like we've had in the previous two years, uh, so we're not getting the deployments and we're not getting the reimbursement, but that's a good thing, so. Maybe we need to look as we, as we do our, uh, our next budget twenty three, twenty four. Maybe we need to, you know, take a, take a close look at, uh, projections.
Or for strike teams?
Yeah.
So. Um, President Donner.
Yes, sir.
Um, so Gloria, I guess I'm, I, I think, you know, given what we see in the financial markets happening these days. I guess I'm concerned about our long way, you know, how all, how the future things for our pensions and. How much our portfolios gone down, I mean, the market's gone down twenty-ish percent since we sort of got any updates on things. And I'm concerned that, you know, the housing market has slowed down a lot because. Interest rates up so far that there's aren't as many trades anymore, not as many houses on the market, so. There aren't going to be, you know, the, the super growth we've been having. At the same time, you know, there's going to be pressure on a lot of our costs with inflation being high, so. I, I think next time it'd be good if we could bring back, you know, an update on the long range financial plan also. And talk about some of the variables that might impact that.
Thank you, Director Jorgens.
Uh. Same kind of question I think Craig was raising. Uh, the numbers that we're seeing in the O P E B and, and the pension. Funds show what it was as of. June thirtieth a year ago and it was what a four seventeen percent decline, the, decrease in, in. The fun balance relating to market decline.
Yeah, I can imagine that same kind of thing is happening in our, uh.
Yeah, I'm just saying that if, if, if you look at a four, a three-year period. Is there any way of getting an update in terms of what's happened? Say like if we looked at it December thirty one, when we're looking at mid-year. In terms of what the loss might be, because what's going to happen is I would assume. Our contribution to the pension and the. To Cyrus, as well as to the. Payment into the. O P E B fund will go up, not down. And I know that it gets bled in over a, you know.
I think, uh, the payments get softened, I believe.
Yeah, over like five years, but it.
It, it's not going to be, it's not going to be good, though.
Right. And so is there any way of getting an update in terms of, so we get some kind of a feel as to what the balance? Market decline has been in those two categories. Uh, mid-year, off-year.
Here on Mia Gloria.
This is right, Cesara publishes a quarterly investment return report. So yes, we have their investment returns on a quarterly basis.
Well, but it's not really their quarter. I mean, they publish something, but it has nothing to do with the current market. I mean, it's. It, the, the most current thing they ever have is at least six months old and most of it's more than a year old. Cause they, they don't, they don't get information from their private equity things for at least a year.
Well, and we, we couldn't get a straight answer from, from Cesara where some of our money even went regarding, uh, the Noviki case.
Exactly.
Yeah.
The sticky wicked, as they say, I think.
You know, I think maybe, uh, we could talk about that being a future agenda item and maybe we have a independent. Oddity for look at that.
Well, that or we, maybe we can also have our, um, our, you know, the folks that do one of the govern, go, govern best, go. What are they called, gun best? Uh, maybe tell us, you know, what they, given some scenarios, what could happen if, you know. What we think might be happening with the market and the value of the investment portfolios and things, what that could do. Even if they blended in over the five years that Sarah does it. Cause unless the market and, and people, you know, you're just Bezos and he said, we're just getting started with a recession. We haven't even started it yet and the market's already down twenty percent, so.
Well, you know, we certainly, we can't, we can't predict what the market's going to do, but we can certainly look at, uh. Our figures from, I think they're from June from twenty twenty one and see where they're at currently. I think would be a good place to start.
I agree.
Yes, on our own portfolios, we, we, at least some guide. I think what you're saying, Michael, is, you know, if we look at what we're, our portfolios are doing.
Yeah. Weren't we looking, given how strong the dollar's been not to invest in international markets, and I know that. Cesara is heavily invested in international markets. And even if the markets themselves had done okay in dollar terms, they've gotten hammered. I mean, like thirty, forty percent kind of hammered.
Well, I think, why don't we, uh, talk about that as a future agenda item, uh, at the end of the meeting?
Okay. Right.
Thank you, Gloria. I will open a public comment on agenda item six point one.
We do not have any hands raised and we've not received written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public, uh, comment on agenda item six point one. Next slide, please. Thank you. Six point two, format of the monthly financial report.
Good evening, directors. At the September twenty twenty two board meeting. Staff was directed to present options to the monthly financial statements with the objective of adding context to the monthly report. In addition to the monthly financial statements that are on the consent calendar each month. The staff will continue to present a comprehensive financial update to the board on a quarterly basis. Such as what was just prepared under item six point one. Staff proposes in addition of a summary to the monthly general fund financial statements. This is in the board packet, it's attachment C, page one. The monthly summary will compare revenue and expenditure categories to the current year budget and to the prior year actuals. The summary will also include comments and explanation of variances or other significant items to note. If district revenue and expenditures are on or off course. This concludes the staff report.
Excuse me, thank you, Gloria. Any questions from directors?
So, just, just to be clear, so when you say on or off course, so. Cause historically, we've had a bunch of reports that showed, you know, where we were relative to the total budget for the year versus. Kind of the pro-rata budget for that month. So is the idea that if we're in. April, you know, the end of, end of March, sorry. So we've got a quarter. That will say, hey, we had anticipated being at X point at the end of March and we're actually at Y point at the end of March for this year. And explain why it's different. So it, it isn't that we're, you know, we're, we're twenty five percent of the way through the whole budget, because that's not interesting. The question is. You know, we hopefully, many things are linear throughout the year. That's great, you know, we, some things are really predictable and some things are not really predictable. And the board, you know, from a decision standpoint, just needs to know whether the things that are. That are predictable are being unpredictable, or if the things that aren't predictable, if they're way off what our expectation was.
Yes, that information would be included.
Okay, great.
Lauren, this is John, um. The, uh, our quarterly reports show a, a fund balance both, you know, for three major funds. Now, the general fund, the debt fund, and of course, which is now zero or will be zero. And, and the, um, capital fund. Uh, we don't get that on a, a monthly basis. Uh, I don't know that it's needed on a monthly basis, but it. The other thing is that we don't have a balance sheet other than once a year. Is there any way of doing a summary balance sheet or is it just more difficult to try and do in a quarterly basis even as? Available to have the balance sheet or a projected balance sheet?
Right, so two questions. So first off, every month, uh, all of the funds are reported that in the financial statements on the consent calendar.
Well, I think it's just the change, isn't it just the change? Like you did, and if you go back to the previous report. It showed a change in the year, didn't show the fund balance until you got into the quarterly report.
Correct. It doesn't show the, it's the revenue and expenditure, it financially, it's come.
Right, it's just, it's transaction driven for the, uh, month.
Both the flows, not the balance, in other words.
But the fund balance then comes in, because when I was looking at the changes in the, in the report, I, I had looked elsewhere to try and find. Which later on, I, when I looked at the quarterly report, I saw that the fund balance, for example, in the capital fund at the end of the year would. You know, be six million dollars or whatever it was after the transfer. But in the transaction, all it looked like was the, you know, million plus dollars. You know, had, would, would have been expended or received. But it didn't show the changes in the fund balance, the fund balance period. And then, you know, and the fund balance was not shown in the transac, in the transaction report. On a monthly basis, and then when I looked down at the end of the year, it shows, you know, it will be zero. After the payment, you know, what was made on the, on the debt in July. So. Question is, I, I, that's partially. What I would hope to see periodically, maybe more frequently than quarterly, is to know what the fund balances are that we're looking at. And then the. Other question is the balance sheet itself, the full balance sheet. How difficult that would be? To produce on a quarterly basis.
Okay, so, yes, we could, right, we could produce a balance sheet on a quarterly basis, yes.
Okay. If, if it's, even if it's summary, I think it would be helpful. Because there's things that in the balance sheet become. You know, just as worrisome sometimes, it's the operational activities in terms of questions and issues. Yeah, I mean, Director Danziger, I think the, uh, summary to the, uh, to the monthly statements with, with notes would be very helpful. And, you know, we'll get a chance to take a look at that and see if we want to do other revisions or to make it clearer for. Not only us, but for the, uh, for the community to be able to read these things, uh. I know, uh, I, I've heard comments from people that say it's really difficult to understand what, you know, what. What some of the financial reports show, and, uh, I think this will make it much clearer. Thank, thank you.
Any more comments from directors?
Nope.
I will open up public comment on agenda item six point two.
We do not have any hands raised and we've not received any written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment on agenda item six point two.
So I, I, I think this is a really great start and, uh, I'm in favor of, of, of what, uh, Gloria presented to us. I know she need, needs some, needs some direction, so I, I'm in favor of it.
Me too.
Okay.
Thank you, Gloria, and thank you, directors.
Yeah, thank you.
Six point three, emergency paid sick leave, COVID nineteen pandemic.
Good evening, directors. Um, I have an update on the, um, emergency paid sick leave, um. For COVID nineteen. So as a background, in April twenty twenty, the M L F D board approved a grant. Of additional sick leave of one hundred and forty-four hours to all employees to minimize the impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic. As a government, as a government employer, M L F D was not eligible for federal reimbursement for the cost of this action under the. Uh, Families First Coronavirus Response Act. In response to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, Governor Newsom signed S B ninety-five on March nineteenth, twenty twenty one. The law required employers to provide an additional eighty hours of COVID nineteen supplemental paid sick leave to full-time employees. And a prorated amount of COVID nineteen supplemental paid sick leave to part-time employees based on their work schedule and work history. For firefighters, the law specifically required employers to provide an additional two weeks of COVID nineteen supplemental paid sick leave. Based on total hours scheduled in the two weeks preceding when the employee takes leave. There was no reimbursement provided by S B ninety-five to employers. The board approved S B ninety-five sick leave in April twenty twenty one. To ensure compliance with S B ninety-five mandates, a sick leave policy was implemented for all members. On February ninth, twenty twenty two, Governor Newsom signed S B one one four. The law reauthorized COVID nineteen supplemental paid sick leave effective. February nineteenth, twenty twenty two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, with retroactivity to January first, twenty twenty two. The law required public and private employers that employ twenty-six or more workers. To provide additional supplemental paid sick leave equivalent to the hours. equivalent to the hours worked in the prior week to be used for COVID related purposes. In response to SB one one four, one one four requirements, on February nineteenth, twenty twenty two, the MLFD board authorized the following: additional emergency paid sick leave in accordance with SB one one four. Compensation to employees at their regular rate beyond SB one one four four requirements, which may exceed SB one one four requirements. No sunset date for SB one one four requirements. Uh, SB, I'm sorry, SB one one four required COVID nineteen supplemental sick leave with the right to establish the sunset at a future date after September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. On September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, Governor Newsom signed AB one fifty two into law. AB one fifty two extends the deadline for employees who have not exhausted their supplemental paid sick leave allotments to use such sick leave until December thirty first, twenty twenty two. The amendment does not provide employees with any more supplemental paid sick leave to use, but extends the period during which the employees have not used their supplemental paid sick leave to use the sick leave if necessary. The district is in compliance with AB one fifty two. Uh, this is information only. No board action is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Any questions from directors or comments?
Hmm, no.
You know, I'll just uh, just say, as you know, walking the district and talking to constituents, I'm surprised at how many people will say through the door that they currently have COVID. So it's certainly uh, still here in the community. That's my only comment.
Yeah.
I will open up public comment on item six point three, an emergency paid sick leave.
We do not have any hands raised and we have not received any written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment on agenda item six point three and move on to six point four. One more slide, please. Thank you. One more. We'll go on to six point four, single role EMT and paramedic positions.
Good evening, directors. Confirming you can hear me?
Yes.
Outstanding. Thanks, sir. My appreciation to the to Gloria and Jeff and Lucas for their their work covering the beginning of the meeting. At the May twenty twenty two regular board meeting, staff was directed to form a working group to develop a proposal to implement single role paramedics to increase ambulance staffing. The working group was also tasked with exploring the creation of a single role EMT position in the appropriate supervisory structure. At the June twenty twenty two regular board meeting, staff was directed to place the item on the October twenty twenty two agenda. Meetings were held with San Ramon Valley Fire District, Berkeley Fire Department, South San Francisco Fire Department regarding their programs. South San Francisco is in the process of implementing a program no later than one July twenty twenty three. This will be an expansion of their existing single BLS transport unit. The program will be made up of three year limited term non safety employees represented by the IAF local. While still under development, this program will engage local residents by sponsoring EMT training opportunities and providing hiring preference for residents in order to create career pathways. South San Francisco intends to support EMT employees participating in paramedic school with city sponsored tuition and internship opportunities. The proposed program also includes the closed loop hiring process for single role paramedics from the pool of EMTs. Hiring credit is also being considered for single role paramedics seeking to become firefighter paramedics. This will result in two EMT slash paramedic staffed ALS ambulances on a twenty four hour schedule, one EMT paramedic ALS ambulance at a twelve hour schedule, and one two EMT BLS twelve hour ambulance. San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District implemented a single role paramedic program in the spring of twenty twenty two. This program shifted one firefighter paramedic ambulance to a forty eight hour paramedic paramedic ALS ambulance while retaining four firefighter paramedic staffed ambulances. The program has served as a hiring pool for firefighter paramedic vacancies with qualified members being offered the opportunity to apply for positions of San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District. These limited turn non safety members are represented by the IAF local. Under this model, single role paramedics were determined to result in a forty five percent savings per ambulance position. Of note, in the San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District deployment model, single role ambulances are being added to the system as an additional response resource. Berkeley Fire Department recently implemented a single role EMT and paramedic positions. These positions participate in a safety retirement and are represented by the IAF local. These members work twelve hour shifts with more information available at the link as provided in the staff report. The Berkeley deployment model implementation of single role ambulance staffing is combined with increased firefighting staffing firefighter staffing on selected apparatus and changes in the supervisory structure. Single role paramedics were determined to result in a twenty six point eight percent savings per position. However, the net cost of implementation is an increase of four hundred eighty two, three hundred ninety five, four hundred eighty two thousand, three hundred ninety five dollars per year in FY twenty three as a result of the both the changes in the supervisory structure and the shift to additional staffing on selected apparatus. In all cases, it was confirmed that firefighter FLSA exemption does not apply and all hours work in excess of a forty uh, forty hours in a week are considered FLSA overtime. In contrast, firefighters overtime is not triggered until the member exceeds fifty six hours in a week. The fully burdened annual cost per MOFD position is estimated as follows, and this is including salary benefits, employer payroll taxes. Firefighter paramedic is approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. A single role paramedic is approximately a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. And of note, a single role EMT which is not recognized, including the current MOU, and would be subject to future meet and confer before anything could be done to implement such a position is estimated to cost a hundred and forty three thousand dollars per year based on the current paramedic differential paid for our firefighter EMTs versus our firefighter paramedics. There are several ways the district could implement single role paramedics and EMTs. Implementation is subject to meet and confer with local twelve thirty per the current MOU. One possible way to to implement this would be to implement would to place one paramedic and one EMT on medic forty five. This would require the district to employ three single role paramedics and three single role EMTs and annual cost of eight hundred ninety one thousand dollars per ambulance. In addition, it would be necessary to also add a supervisory employee resulting in additional costs. This would be subject to meet and confer. Of note, it would be reasonable to assume that the additional cost of that supervisory position would be somewhere in the range of what we pay a firefighter paramedic, which would be benchmarked from the cost of firefighter paramedic above a two sixty, roughly three hundred thousand dollars per year uh, inclusive for the cost, an additional cost for supervision in addition uh, to the the cost of the ambulance staffing. A second implementation option would be to staff two single role ambulances at both medic forty five and medic forty one. More direction would be required regarding assignment of the six firefighter paramedics that are currently assigned to medic forty one. Current budget includes funding for fifty seven safety positions. Section twenty four of the MOU with local twelve thirty dictates minimum staffing. Per the MOU, the present minimum staffing level of safety personnel is seventeen. The MOU states the district may reduce number of safety personnel to fifty three and hire six single role paramedics to staff district ambulances with on duty minimum staffing of two single paramedics per shift. Should the board decide to staff two ambulances with single role paramedics and or EMTs instead of firefighter paramedics per the MOU, the district would also have the option to reduce the number of safety positions. This is presented for information only. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Chief, this is Director Donner, just in regards to San Ramon. So out of their five ambulances, they have only uh, taken one of the five and gone with this role, correct?
That's correct, sir. They staff four firefighter paramedic based ambulances and one uh, single role paramedic paramedic ALS ambulance.
Any questions from directors for the chief at this moment?
Um, this director Danziger, um, so I mean, there's it I'm just trying to get my my arms around all this that, you know, I kind of have a piece of paper here where I wrote down all the possibilities are still. You know, in my head, there's still a lot of different options that it's if the board wanted to implement single role as opposed to using the current role that we presently have. You know, and I I I just I've been, you know, kind of figure them all out and look at, look at it. You know, I mean, there were so many questions that came into my mind, like, you know, twelve hour shifts. Do we do we stand? Just some of the questions that came into my head were if we did single role, would they would we do both? Would we do both forty one and forty five? Would they be twelve hour shifts? One be it? Would one be a twenty four hour shift? One be a twelve hour shift? You know, what would we do with the two additional firefighters? Uh, do we put one in each, one in each station on a on the on the on the ambulance with a paramedic? You know, I just, it's real, it's it's just, there's there's so many options and then there's then then there's the supervisor that that would probably be needed if we do the single role. You know, it's just like, I I just, I just don't know how to get my head around it. I'm just, I'm just, I'm kind of conflicted on it. My my original inclination, and I'll just say it right here, is is to is to support restoration of the staffing in the current model. That's where my head is, but I can be, you know, I just feel that we wouldn't need the supervisor. We would, we would actually gain two firefighters. Uh, we, my understanding is we have the we have the ability to house these people at Station Forty Five. Um, you know, ultimately, that's the safest and probably the best model that I can see. So I'm going to have to be convinced that staffing with uh, just firefighter paramedics in the present model is not is 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 not the way to go. And, you know, so I I I I guess I'm not really asking a question. I'm just saying there's still you know, I don't really know, I I'm really, I really don't know how to get my head around all this and where where we I see all the information. I really appreciate it. I've gone back over the the previous reports. Um, I'm just not sure where 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 to go with it right, right today. So I'm just kind of throwing that out. I don't really, you know, I don't really have a question. I'm just telling you where I'm at. I'm kind of conflicted about it all right now.
Well, I'd like to just give my, you know, I'm kind of viewing this process, number one, just overall safety for the entire district. Uh, number two, you know, bringing in new medics and EMTs, I'm a little bit concerned about our complicated district and response times. And I I'm certainly not a fan of going from seventeen to fifteen on a daily basis. And there's so many ways to to open up Station Forty Five in Arinda. I'm conflicted as well. I I just want to do what's really best for the public. And I'm thinking about that, number one. Number two, I'm thinking about response times. And then also just thinking about having two less firefighters on duty per day, which, um, you know, I I just I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around it as well. It's a, it's a very complicated issue for me. Any other directors have any input?
This is Director Jex.
Go ahead, Director Jex.
Be helpful to me to have a on a forecast basis, what it would look like in terms of economics to the district. Um, and I know there's several options, but I think to look at those options and what the net cost, you know, I the, I think on the Berkeley in uh, example, there was an implementation cost of about four hundred thousand. Several of the others who I think were also providing funding for training and recruitment and a number of other things. I I would just like to see what it would look like in terms of a a total package before I would feel comfortable in proceeding many further.
I I agree that, this director Danziger, I I agree that that's certainly a piece of of what we need, the total package. But I think we also have to look at what's the best model for our district and and for the this community. You know, there's a there, I mean, you get, you get the most bang for the, you know, obviously, the the higher the level, if we hire, you know, I guess it would be six, six more firefighter paramedics if we could even get that many. Obviously, that's the the safest model and the, to me, it's the safest model for the community. And they just fit right in and wouldn't take any new supervisor or any any other negotiations. I guess that we have to, we'd have to add uh, to the to the staffing model. But
the, I think, maybe the other question, the fact that the three districts doing this, what was their motivation? I mean, I'd be interested in why we 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 learned what what they did. The issue is why? What was the rationale and justification on their part in terms of why they would make that implementation and change and and go through that process?
That was one of the things that when the chief sent out of the request for, you know, questions, that was one of the ones that I had is, you know, what was the logic? What was the math they went through? What were, you know, what were the pros and cons? And how did they think about it? You know, it's it's a wheel, but it's not the first wheel. So we don't need to reinvent it necessarily. At least we can leverage the logic and the rationale and the data that other people had to see what what their rationale was. And I think we need to figure out, again, we had talked about the long range financial forecast. This would make a material difference in our long range finances and given the current uncertainty, you know, we need to see how that's going to play into it.
Any other directors have any additional comments at this time? I will open up a public comment on item six point four.
We have two hands raised. Um, I A F F local twelve thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, good evening, directors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening. My name is Dan Albana, MLFD District Representative. I'd like to thank you, Board of Directors, Administration, Administration staff and the public for hearing me. I would just like to make the comment that I think at this time, given the fact that with the presentation, we have just under fifty percent unrestricted reserves with two additional reserve accounts, the OPEB and unrestricted or the the pension stabilization fund. I think it's inappropriate to be discussing even contemplating removing two firefighters from this district. I think it's 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 inappropriate to discuss it and do this to the community, especially during time when we're so concerned with wildland fires uh, and for good reason, that is just absolutely not the time now to sit here and discuss removing firefighters. Um, in regards to staffing medic forty five with paramedic EMTs as opposed to firefighter paramedics, um, when you kind of look at the total cost, as the chief said, adding the supervisor role, um, if you see the billboards around or hear anything in the newspaper as far as AMR paramedics plus are offering bonuses just to try to hire EMTs and paramedics, that is something we would have to do as well, which has an additional cost. Their turnover of having a short term, uh, three year term single role uh, resources and the cost of training, hiring, recruiting, all that adds a lot to what this is going to cost. And and my rough calculation is something around three hundred thousand dollars difference between hiring firefighter paramedics um, versus paramedics EMTs. So for three hundred thousand dollars additionally, you can get firefighter paramedics on medic forty five, which increases our operational ability um, to for Arinda and downtown Arinda here to get two and two out so we can initiate fire tack faster on structured fires, wildland fires, our ability to um, do hose progressive hose lays and attack the fire more effectively um, and faster rope rescues, as we saw during the operations uh, presentation by Chief Lambert, more hands able to set up the roast systems would take a lot of time. I'm actually being able to send a firefighter paramedic down the hill to assess the patient. To me, three hundred thousand dollars additionally is a very small price to pay to add this level of service to the district. That honestly deserves it. Their their tax money is paying, should be paying for the highest level of support and and service that it should get. And I think firefighter paramedics are the way to go. Um, and moving down the road, uh, the light like, uh, Director Donner was saying, it is, you know, or Dan Jerr, I believe, saying that there's a lot that has to be done to implement this while we're set up with our MOUs now to hire firefighter paramedics. Um, and another thing I'd just like to say is that the the examples given by chief, um, many of that in Berkeley and San Ramon, they actually added positions firefighter positions uh, to their overall rosters. to their overall rosters on the day. I don't see that. We only have one where we're removing firefighter, firefighters or keeping it status quo.
That concludes our three minutes.
You, you, you can, you can wrap it up.
Thank you. The last thing I'd like to say is I just don't believe we should be considering firefighter or the paramedic EMT single roles. And I would encourage the board to, for next month, to simply vote on increasing our staffing to nineteen firefighters per shift.
Thank you for your comment. Marcia, do we have any more hands raised?
Yes, Jonathan Goodwin.
Good evening. So I would say that the chief's report is a big step up from the report that came back from the committee, which was purely biased. You know, we don't like it. Basis for making a decision, I don't think. As of time. And this report, I think is better, gives a little more information. But it leaves out I think the, the basis upon which the whole question should be asked, which I, I don't understand. I can under, I can see why directors' heads are spinning with this. Yeah, there's all these possibilities. So there's no basis for making a decision because the decision is not what can we do? The decision should be, what should we do based on our need? Right? What is the need? What are the needs of the district? You're talking about going back to basic standards of coverage discussion. And I would submit to you, this should be done very carefully. This should not be done carelessly. This should not be done off the cuff. If you're going to question the standards of coverage, you should go back to the original standards of coverage document made by the first fire chief of this district, guy named Johnson. And you should go forward from that point to look at, to update what the calls are, when, you know, the district is needed, what it's needed for. That's the basis upon which you should make your decisions. Because what other basis is there? It's just prejudice, just bias. You know, we want more firefight. We want to spend more money, want to spend less money. That doesn't go to the heart of the problem, which is what is actually needed to serve the residents. Now, I want to add one more thing, which is the business about firefighter paramedics versus paramedics versus EMTs is a very, very, it's touchy politically, but you know, get, throw, put that aside for a moment. It's really important. It's really critical in terms of what kind of fire protection, basically, the, the district offers. And if you're, if you snip that off so that the guys in the ambulance cannot assist with the hoses, then that's a serious decision. This should be done very carefully. And I would suggest that, obviously, you guys don't yet have a way of thinking about this. You might want to think about hiring a consultant as, as outlandish as that sounds. I mean, I kind of choke on saying this, but I just throw the idea out. You may not want to do it, but you think about it. If a consultant could put forward a process where you could think this stuff through. And I may, you know, maybe you can do it another way, but I'm just presenting it this way for.
And that concludes our three minutes.
May I just wrap up, President Donner?
Yes, go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you. I, I think that would, yeah, the question is, what does the district need? What do the residents of the district need? And I think that's really what needs to be established before you talk about, should we buy a red one or a green one, right? And, and I'm, I'm sure you agree with me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. You know, I, I will add that I have, you know, personally received over two hundred emails in support of hiring firefighter paramedics. And I think just like our community is demanding, you know, the best fire prevention program. I think they are also demanding the best service possible. And like, I don't remember the gentleman's name with IAFF. And Jonathan Goodwin is, this is a very serious issue. And I think that we need to take a very serious, long, hard look and not think about three hundred thousand dollars and think about what is really the best service for our community. Period. What's the safest thing we can do for our community?
So we do not have any more hands raised and we've not received any written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close. Any more comments from directors?
Well, this is Director Danziger, you know, Mr. Goodwin's comments, I, I certainly appreciated. And he made a suggestion of, you know, a consultant. You know, I mean, this, and, and I do think this is a, a, a a pretty critical decision we're, we're embarking on here, one way or another, whatever, whatever we decide. I think there's a lot of factors still. You know, maybe it's, maybe it is not so outrageous to think about a workshop on this and with, with somebody to, to guide us. And maybe it's our district council, maybe, you know, Mr. Holtzman certainly knows a lot of people in the, in this, in the, in the field. Maybe there's someone he could suggest that, but I really think, you know, just echoing what, what I, my frustration on trying to, you know, reach some kind of consensus within myself and hearing Mr. Goodwin as well, you know, maybe we do need something like that. Maybe we need someone to, to kind of run something for us and I, I, I don't think it's something we could just jump into. You heard me, the way I was leaning, but I, I'm, I'm not totally convinced. I'm not ready to say, yes, let's do it right now. And, and I don't know how we're going to get to that. And there are a lot, a lot of issues to consider here. And, and I'll say what President Donner said as well. I probably got close to three hundred emails supporting restoration of staffing. I, I don't recall that all of them said it should be firefighter paramedics, but I did get about three hundred emails supporting additional staffing.
Opening up Station forty-five?
Yeah.
The ambulance.
Okay.
Director Jorgens, do you have anything to add?
You guys have covered it a lot.
Okay. I will close public comment on agenda item six point four, single role EMT and paramedic positions.
Well, going, going, you know, going forward into, you know, we're, we're looking now, we have more information. We had, this is about the fourth report on this. You know, with, I'm, I'm thinking about next month. The, you know, may, maybe we, I, I don't know what we, I don't know where we go from here. I'm just trying to say, I mean, do we, we can't just forget it. And I'd like to see us go into next month and, and maybe have, you know, some, some another report or make a decision on how we're going to go forward on this. Yes or no? Or do we actually go ahead and find somebody to help us work through this? Maybe it means just a special meeting, just, just for this. You know, I, I don't just want to leave it here and not make any kind of decision going forward. I think we could, I, I do feel we should continue pursuing this in, in some form. You know, we took, it's taken a long time to get to this point.
So, Mr. Holtzman, can we call for a special meeting regarding this particular issue?
Uh, that's, I don't see a reason why not. The, there are certain things that you have to do in regular meetings, like passing resolutions and ordinances and the like. I'd have to go back and look at the, the rules. But, you know, if, if it's really just to discuss the, the issue, I, I think that there's, there's nothing that stops you from doing it that I can think of.
I guess my impression of that would be, you know, we, many people have, you know, council members and other people have, have lots of conflicts. And the reason we have our regular meetings is so that people you know, can kind of schedule when they're going to be available for things. And so I guess I would think it would be better to cover it a regular meeting.
Well, I think it's going to take a little period of time, at least the information that I indicated for staff to put together, make some assumptions and then make some presentations. And I think, you know, give them time to do it. I don't know that you could do that in ten days, two weeks. And then particularly if we look to have some kind of a consultant or you know, discuss all the issues. You know, I think it's just going to take more time.
President.
Good thing to talk about.
President Donner?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we've discussed this quite a bit. We've had numerous reports over and over. I think at some point, we just need to make a decision and move forward with it. If we keep pulling in consultants, if we keep going for more reports, we're just going to keep spinning our wheels and not you know, make a decision. I think we're at the point now where we've had our discussions. We've had it back and forth. We've had the presentations. I think we need to move forward with making a decision.
Well, Director Bates, can you tell us what the long range financial impact of this is going to be?
No, I cannot give you exact numbers of that.
Well, do you feel like we have the, the data then to be able to make that decision?
I do. I do believe we have the data to make it a good decision. I think we've had plenty of presentations. You know, point to one way or the other. We've got direction from the citizens, one way or the other. Again, I think we just need to move forward with this and make a decision and not just keep having presentations.
And I think the benefit of us having a special meeting is I think that, you know, we can really dedicate the meeting to this issue because it is a complex, detailed issue. And I think in that special meeting, we can talk about the long range financial plan. We can talk about the various scenarios.
We can talk about what, what the rationale of the people used and what their pros and cons were.
Yeah, so I, I, so I think a special meeting for information and for us to really hash this out as a board and, and talk, discuss, deliberate is appropriate.
But you just want to add it since, since part of the reason to have it as a, as a, you know, a separate time is to add special, dedicated time to it. In the past, we've often combined, you know, sort of extended a regular meeting and had the special meeting, like the workshops for the budget and things. We've had them at the same time, but you extended it for a couple hours ahead of time or after, usually ahead of time. Because that way it still fits on people's calendars.
I think that's a good, I think that's a, that's a good way. Do it. Do the special part of the meeting prior to our regular meeting next month.
That's going to be ready with the data by then. That's great.
Well, if, if, if we can, if we, if we can specify, I mean, I heard, yeah, the implications and the different scenarios for the long range financial plan, for the budget. I mean, maybe we could specify what it is that we want. Either now or maybe.
I think we should specify that now so that we, we give staff direction.
You know, it might take, all I'm thinking is we could do what we can now, but maybe, maybe all of us need to, after the meeting, we could submit it. Does that work also or?
Sure.
You know.
That would be better.
Okay.
Put, put it into writing. And I mean, we've done it before for other issues where we've submitted to the chief our questions on what we wanted him to, to cover and in a report. So maybe it's questions we could ask and see if it's, if it's something that's doable for staff by our next meeting.
Great.
I agree.
That sounds like a good plan.
So, so I'm just asking if, if that, is that enough direction for, for the chief, for staff to send out maybe an email to us, asking for us for our questions? For the, what we want to see in a, in, in the information.
Yes, sir. So as I understand the direction, it's to schedule a, a special meeting prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting for the, the purpose of the continuation of the discussion of this topic. And that directors will submit their questions in advance. I would ask two things. One, that those questions be submitted as soon as possible. Some of the items that have been mentioned in passing here will require not only a significant amount of staff work to determine, but a significant amount of specificity with regard to the question the director is seeking to be, seeking to be answered. I, I would offer as an example to the, the point made earlier, that there are many possible permutations and possibilities of what we could do. Submitting a question that said, I, I would like to see the financial impact of, of changing our staffing would, would not give us enough to go on. A better phrased question would be, I would like to see the financial impact of increasing staffing to nineteen or of implementing a, a single function, et cetera, et cetera. So a, a specific scenario, it would be very helpful if the questions include the, the specific scenario and then the time horizon within which the, the model information is being sought. And, and I do have to caution that, that there may be questions that are, that are simply too complex to, to answer within the time allotted. However, we'll certainly endeavor to answer all of them in a wholesome manner.
Well, and you can give us feedback. If, if there are questions that can't be done, we can talk about timing too, if we have to.
Thank you, chief. So I, I think the directors are clear on how to ask our questions.
Yes, I, I would just like to ask Mr. Holtzman a question. At, at a special meeting, let's just say we had a special meeting, could there also be various items for us to, there can be various items for us to vote on at a special meeting? We can approve, approve things at a special meeting?
Well, so I was just looking at that and Chief, you may be able to help me with this, but I recall there being a limitation on transacting certain types of businesses, special meetings. And I'm trying to, trying to find it now. Anybody or Marcia? Or am I, maybe I'm misremembering it. Let me, I'll tell you what, let me, let me just take a look at this and I'll get back to you on it. A, a special meeting is what, that we're proceeding. Oh, well, that, yeah, that's right. It's a good point. If it's receding the, a regular meeting, it doesn't really matter. It's just that the issue is if you're going to take action on something, I mean, for fairly obvious reasons under the Brown Act, as you know, if it's an action item, that has to be agendized. Right? So you can't take action on an item that isn't on the agenda. So if you, for example, decide at that meeting you want to do X, then you're going to have to, you're going to have to agendize that for a subsequent meeting in order to act on it. You've got to be pretty specific under the Brown Act about what you're going to act on or may act on, I should say, not what, what you're going to act on, but you may act.
Maybe I have a question. Maybe it's for the chief. Chief, and I, I think it was in your report, but I've just, I just want to clarify. If the, if we, I'm just saying this is just out there. If we decided we wanted to go to nineteen, is that, is that a meet and confer item?
Yes, sir. The, the current minimum staffing referenced in the Local twelve thirty MOU specifies seventeen as the minimum staffing. If we were going to be increasing minimum staffing, that obviously would require opening the MOU and opening the, the MOU is, is obviously is more than me conferred in the negotiation.
Gotcha. So, and, and the way I'm thinking is if, if, if this board decided any of the possibilities, scenarios, we wouldn't be able to vote on it next month because any of them would have to, I think any of them would have to go in the negotiations and change in MOUs and all that. I, I think every single one of them, we, we do have the position. We have, we have the paramedic position and the firefighter paramedic. But if we wanted to go with single role, that would have to go through a process. So we can talk about it next month, but I'm, now I'm here in, I, I don't think it would be something we'd be able to approve because it still needs to go through that, that other process, you know.
That's fair.
Right. Yes, sir. The only scenario that's envisioned in the MOU that is not subject to bargaining would be the implementation of single role paramedics based on a reduction in safety staffing. That's still subject to meet and confer. But not the bargaining since it's already envisioned in the MOU. Everything, every other scenario would be subject to bargaining.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
So, Directors, if I could just to may restate to ensure I, I properly understand the board's direction will be to schedule a special meeting prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting. The topic will be, um, the, the same agenda item, topic that was used tonight. The, uh, the substance of the provided presentation and or staff report will be, um, responses to questions received from the directors in the interim with, uh, noting the request for specificity on the questions and, and the potential that there may be questions that are too complex to be answered within the, the available time.
Yep.
Understood. I think are, are all the directors clear on our directions for, uh? Six point four?
Yeah.
Okay, next slide please, Marcia. Thank you. Six point five, establish an ad hoc committee to investigate with Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors. If MOFD members are eligible to receive the federal COVID nineteen relief one time twenty five hundred dollar payment.
Good evening, Directors. Uh, last month, a question was raised regarding the, the county's receipt of, uh, COVID relief funds which were subsequently used to recognize, um, uh, or to provide a, a bonus to selected members of the county workforce, uh, that served in frontline positions related to COVID. Uh, as mentioned, the staff report, this was only provided to selected, uh, elements of the county staff. And was, uh, included a provision that to receive it, the employee had to have been working as of a certain date for a certain length of time. And it's worth noting that, that this did not include members of the former East Contra Costa County Fire Protection District who are currently members of the Contra Costa County Fire Protection District. And that this is, uh, the first time that we're aware of that the county fire, Contra Costa County Fire specifically, which is a dependent special district distinct from MOFD in San Ramon is independent special district. So it was a dependent special district. While a separate, um, government entity, the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors meets separately as the, the Confire Fire Board. Uh, and Confire was included as a, a county, um, agency for the purpose, uh, of these, um, of this bonus money. It's also worth noting that, uh, as a special district, MOFD and the other fire districts in the county were not eligible for COVID relief funds, which were provided to cities and counties. Uh, and the, um, however, that said, um, should there be an interest in pursuing this? I believe this is a political discussion best carried out by politicians. Uh, would encourage the board to form an, add a, name members to an ad hoc committee that could engage our elected representatives on this topic.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Well, I, I will volunteer to see if I can get our members to, this one time payment of COVID relief.
I'll, I'll let, uh, Director Bates to go along with it. Probably most knowledgeable about the firefighter positions.
Yeah, I'm going to have to recuse myself from that just because I am part of Confire now and I'm not going to muddy the waters at all. But thank you.
Well, well, if you need to, I'll, I'll be, I'll, I'll volunteer to, to do whatever I need to do to find out about it.
All right. Thank you, Director Danzinger. So I think you have your ad hoc committee, Director Donner and Director Danzinger.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Thank you. I will open public comment on agenda item six point five.
We do not have any hands raised or received written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment on agenda item six point five. One more slide, please.
I need a motion to establish the committee. I haven't.
Don't move. The committee has identified the ad hoc committee.
Second.
Investigated.
Thank you, Marcia. Can we get a vote, please?
Director Bates?
Aye.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Jex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
And President Donner?
Aye. Thank you. Committee reports, seven point one, audit committee.
Nothing to report, I think, other than that there's, we heard earlier, start date of the audit was identified with to be completed. So nothing to report.
Thank you. Seven point two, East Bay Hills wildfire prevention and vegetation management, joint powers, agency meetings.
Nothing to report since the last meeting, sir.
Thank you. Seven point three, facility station forty one, ad hoc committee, nothing to report. Seven point four, joint fire prevention ad hoc committee with the city of Arinda. Director Jorgens, want to give an update, please?
Sure. Uh, we had a very good meeting last Monday, Tuesday, uh, with, uh, with, um, the, the city manager and the chief. And I, I think they're making lots of, the city of Arinda is making lots of progress. They are about to hire, uh, another full-time person to work on, uh, prevention and communications. And that's terrific. They've also started their grant program in the city of Arinda. Uh, along the focusing initially on the emergency routes to give up to five hundred and ninety nine dollars. You know, the resistance to that six hundred dollar tax limit, uh, in match fifty percent matching funds to people that do, uh, fuel reduction along the emergency routes. And they also have to be part of a firewise community and have their home inspected by, uh, one of the, the of our fire adaptive advisors, uh, before they qualify. But, uh, they, they are making progress on that. And we also heard from Archie, uh, saying that, you know, we were making good progress on the, maybe you're going to talk about it later, Chief. So, so if you are, I'll, I'll stop, but about the fire could.
Maybe, ma- maybe the chief is going to talk about this, but, um, there was a, a, a part of that, that meeting. There was a discussion about a, a grant that we've received. And I'd like to, like to hear a little bit more about that.
Yes, sir. Not a, not a grant, um, under the, the city manager, uh, bigs. Uh, city manager from Arinda with support from MOFD and support from the town manager. Um, advocated, uh, with, uh, Assembly Member Bayer Cahan's office for inclusion of a budget line item to, um, to enhance our wildfire mitigation programs. Uh, that resulted in the budget trailer which passed last week, uh, Assembly Member, uh, Bayer Cahan was able to include an eight hundred thousand dollar, um, appropriation in the budget trailer, uh, going to MOFD for a three-year pilot expansion of our fuels mitigation program specifically for the expansion of our, uh, fuel mitigation specialists. For two additional positions for three years, should the board obviously, um, choose to, to accept it being a little premature to announce it. Uh, that said, we're, this just happened, uh, we're still involved in the administrative process with the state. And as that information, uh, is received and processed and refined and we, we get down to finalization, we'll bring, uh, an additional item back to the board to, uh, to accept and make a, um, accept the, the, um, the budget, uh, earmark or the, sorry, budget allocation to make the budget adjustment, uh, for us, since that wasn't the budget position. And to establish two additional positions which we then use our, our current opening, um, enrollment, or sorry, our open, um, recruitment to fill for.
Great. Good news.
That's great. That's, wow.
Uh, thank you for the report, Director Jorgens, on our two by two committee meeting. I will open up public comment on agenda items seven point one through seven point four.
Jonathan Goodwin.
Hello, Jonathan.
Well, good evening. Um, for myself and the likely hundreds of other people listening. I was wondering if you could give an update on the status of station forty one. The administration building being way too small, the, uh, fire station being way too small and inadequate. Um, I, I don't know where things are at and I, I would appreciate some sort of an update. Thank you.
There, there's no update to provide. We're still in the process of preliminary discussion with, uh, various property owners about possible alternate locations for the, both the fire station and the administration building.
And, and hopefully a training facility.
Yes, sir. In conjunction with the decision.
We do not have any more hands raised or received written public comment.
Uh, thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment on agenda items seven point one through seven point four. Future agenda items. Excuse me for one second, Director Danzinger.
Yeah, yeah.
Chief, since, um, our fire inspector and plans examiner, um, is now back open, would it make sense for us, uh, as a district and, and for your administration for us to possibly hire an assistant fire marshal? Instead of a plan, uh, fire inspector, plan examiner?
Um, that, that, that.
Are they one in the same?
Um, no, sir. The assistant fire marshal, uh, is generally a higher qualification as additional certifications and capabilities generally, obviously, uh, paid more and is, is considered a promotional opportunity from inspector. Um, I, I certainly could bring back, um, the, an analysis of the, the requirements. Uh, that said, as a general statement, um, between, um, plans examination, code enforcement and all of the other things to include E-occupancies, et cetera, that the board has expressed interest. E-occupancies and other occupancies that the district has not historically inspected. Uh, a DFM would certainly, um, at least, uh, on first blush, would, uh, make it to recruit a person who had greater qualifications would make it easier to retain that person. Uh, and would very likely, uh, decrease the, the number of inspections and others, uh, follow-ups and so forth that require the fire marshal's attention, thus pulling him away from other tasks. I, I, one of the things I, I would like to offer to the board as a general statement is that, um, we're doing an awful lot of things in, in many, many spaces, um, both figuratively and, and literally. And everything that, that bubbles up every time, um, we, we have something that requires additional attention because the, the first person who made contact was incapable of resolving it on their own. Sometimes, which is not necessarily, uh, an issue of either code interpretation or being right or wrong. It, it, it has to do with, with how the resident received the message and, and whether that message was received in a manner that was, made them, um, feel that they're, it had been resolved and that they didn't need to, to request an, an informal appeal, if you will, uh, to the next level in our hierarchy. Every time something bubbles over, um, either into the fire marshal's, uh, desk or to my desk, et cetera, it takes away from, uh, from our other efforts. Uh, as I said, if, a, a DFM is definitely considered, um, a step up or promotion, if you will, from a plans examiner inspector. Uh, classifying the position as a DFM with the increase in qualifications and the increase in paid benefits that would come with that uh, would very likely result or result in getting, uh, a more qualified member, uh, who would be more autonomous and require less supervision and have fewer issues, uh, rise beyond, uh, their ability to, to resolve.
Well, you know, so my, my thought process is, is I know that you and fire marshal Isaacs are up to your elbows in, in work. And if we're looking at a plans examiner and, and if we could hire somebody that could, um, help our fire prevention program, support you and the fire marshal, you know, maybe it's something, um, we look at.
Yeah, the, I, I think it's a, a really interesting idea. The only downside that I, I mean, and it's just a risk is sometimes when you hire somebody that has a lot of qualifications and you're saying, oh, by the way, we're going to make you, you're going to do the job of a plans examiner. That can be frustrating. So I, you just got to make sure that we actually will, will have enough for them to do beyond that so that they have an enriching job that is what they think they were, got hired to do.
Yes, sir. I think one of, for anyone, any candidates who may be listening or listen to this, um, to work in the MOFD fire prevention division by definition means you need to be willing to do windows. And it, because of our size and because, uh, of the, the whole scope of things that are covered and the limited size of the staff. That means everybody, uh, needs to be able to, to quickly move across the spectrum from very mundane to very complex. Sometimes in the space of the same conversation.
Great. Okay. I just, you know, that, that can be a risk though.
Um, President Donner, I have a couple of things.
Yes.
Okay, um, one, um, future agenda item I'd like to, um, I'd like to see is in our hiring, um, and you know, we're doing the, the, uh, the, the plans examiner inspector right now. And I asked the question earlier and Chief, before you were here, I think, um, I, I asked Christine the question. And I would like to see, and, and it probably, uh, Mr. Holsman would have to chime in in some kind of report, but I'd like to see, uh, some kind of preference in hiring, giving, being given to, uh, residents of our district. And also do we give precedence, uh, any kind of, uh, preference to, uh, to veterans?
Military.
So the answer is no. But I would like to discuss that issue. I'd like to hear about the possibility. Can we give, give some kind of, you know, couple of points or however we do it to residents as well as veterans? So it doesn't have to be next month. I'm just saying, I'm thinking about that. Uh, the other one has to do with, um, uh, I guess, I guess it could be part of, uh, uh, the fire marshal's, uh, monthly report. Um, I'd like to know, I mean, I see it in the budget, uh, about citations. So, you know, as I'm, uh, busy here in the, in the community, talking to people, I hear a lot of comments about citations. And, you know, we've, we've discussed citations and, and people getting citations at, at our, at our hearings here uh, from the board. I'd like to see a report on, um, the citations. Uh, I'd like to see, um, I, and I, I see it in, in the budget. I, I saw something that says administrative citation fee. I'd like to see just a report on, uh, maybe we do it for, for the end of the, end of the, well, it'd be the end of the calendar year, but I'd like to see a report. And again, it doesn't have to be for next month, but in the, in the next couple of months, uh, a, a, a staff report on the citation. Uh, I'd like to hear about, uh, processing dated ticket ink, what our contract is, what they get, how much we've billed, how much we received, uh, on citations. That's it.
Did we want to get something on the agenda to look at our pension?
Yeah, to look at the long range financial plan and how, and what the, an update on how, what we, at least some scenarios of what we think are going to happen. And we can, I'll, I'll, I'll send it some data on scenarios that she wants. What, what could happen, given the future, you know, the clouds and the future economy? Uh, and even the current economy for that, I mean, the current situation, just to see what that, what we think that might happen. And if we need to get Gov Invest or one of those people involved so we can see how all that works into the long range financial plan, I think that'd be useful.
Well, it's a good thing this board has been, uh, diligently putting money away.
Yep.
I, I have one more and it'll be, be a short one too. I'd like to see a future agenda item uh, on the, uh, tunnel east bay, uh, hills. I'd like to see a timeline, uh, just a, a summary report where we're at and, and a timeline. For the, for, uh.
I, if, if, if.
Going forward.
If I may, just to temper, temper expectations on that one, sir, the, right now, things are event driven, not time driven. It's event driven based on the environmental, um, review and plan that is required before we can move forward. Uh, and, and that, well, we can certainly put some dates, um, some marks on the calendar when we, we think things will happen. Uh, but there's a significant portion of that that is outside of our control and, um, i- is unknowable because it depends on what is, what is determined or what is found. A good example, um, with the required archaeological review, it starts with a records check. Um, they don't share what the records check finds. I- if they find archaeological things, that, that's not something to which they call attention. And, and so then if, if the records check determines there is a probability of protected sites in or around the project area, then that, that triggers additional actions and additional actions, all of which are, are unknowable and move at the speed with which they move. So we, we will certainly, we have, we have what we think is a plan and we have hopes of being able to accomplish things in accordance to that plan. But as Jeff, uh, mentioned, uh, there are projects in our region right now that are being, uh, shut down as a result of litigation. And, and so we, we can only move as fast as the, the process moves with regard to the environmental review, which is, is one hundred percent outside of our control.
Understood. Hey, so maybe, maybe Chief, I, I, I saw that, um, today in the fire chief updates, there was a tunnel east bay uh, hills, uh, Hills shaded fuel break project. Could you just leave that on there every time until?
Yes, sir. We we tend to.
Yeah, I think that'd be good enough. Tell us where we're at.
Yes, sir. I should also say, just to temper my my caution a little bit there, that we're the stage we're in right now has elements that are unknowable. When we get done with the environmental review with which is at a fuel break, as that was one of the governor's thirty five priority projects, and it came with a sequo exemption, which this project did not have. So once we get through this particularly time consuming and lengthy process, we will have the gold standard of environmental review plans in place, and we will then execute to the letter of the plan and and be able then to move much more quickly with a a smaller in the field biological review or environmental review footprint than we had last time because of the rigor of the plan that preceded the work. So our hope has always been that with the the plan would be wrapped up in time to take advantage of the the soon to begin seasonal weather, which is conducive to fuels mitigation, and we may still be on that plan. And if so, we will be executing with violence in the near future. That said, if things are found and that result in as a result, the environmental review runs long, there is a prob a possibility that we will move into next fire season, which then delays quite a bit of the work because while you can do fuel mitigation work during the drier months, one, it brings with it increased risk, and with that risk comes increased cost and decreased productivity. So we're we are, we're very much in a in a holding pattern. It's very fluid right now. But as that sets up, we should be able to, one, move much more quickly and, two, more efficiently, and then with some degree of certainty.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, chief.
President Donner?
Uh, yes, sir. I know we have our special membership meeting next month prior to our regular meeting. I would like to see on the regular agenda an action item on what we are, you know, just discussing in that special membership meeting. And I don't know how specific the agenda needs to be. Does it have to be agendized word for word or just as an action item?
You know, so you have to have, I mean, word for word, no. But but the essence of the action you're planning, and and you can have, you could have multiple actions. You could say you're gonna choose between A and B, but it does require, you know, specificity because the idea of the Brown Act is you're you're supposed to be putting the public on notice of what might happen in, you know, in that meeting. So it does require, you know, some some decisions to be paid ahead of time in terms of what what the options you're presenting are. If there's gonna be a resolution, then you need to draft with the resolution file ordinance, you need to draft the ordinance in the file, et cetera.
So one, so if I wanted to have one of the options being restoring the medic firefighter roles to medic forty five, that could be one of our options that we can take action on, correct?
Well, again, you're not gonna be able to take action because of meeting your fur item. But you could take preliminary action to tell, you know, the chief to go forward. I mean, remember, there's a second issue here, which is, and I'll let the chief speak to this, but the chief is the one who actually does the you would be directing here, or I guess, have to think about this a minute. The chief's the one who actually establishes the staffing. So I guess the, you know, the bottom line is.
John, let me go in because that that's not quite right. The the minimum staffing in the MOU would be subject to board direction. To go, the board direction would be to go meet and confer to negotiate. The meet and confer and the negotiation is a staff function. The what 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 we need the the board to provide is the direction regarding what what we are either meeting conferring to establish or what we are negotiating. Anything that involved bargaining and a modification of the MOU would then obviously come back to the board for approval. But the action item for next month would be to provide the direction. Then from with that direction, staff under my direction would move forward with either the bargaining or the meet and conferred, depending on the direction that was provided.
Thanks. That's much clearer.
Thank you. Before adjournment, I'd like to take a minute. Does anybody have any else, any other agenda items?
I just want to make sure that if I may, that was clarified that we're gonna put that on the agenda for next month to give direction.
It'd be as counsel mentioned, it we do require that the board tell us what the I understand the request for an action item on the regular agenda following the special meeting. I I do need to be told what the what the action items are so that we ensure we we are capturing the board's intent correctly.
So, all right, so one of the options would be to restore fire medics to medic forty five. And if anybody else wants to throw another option in there.
So are you saying the the daily staffing would be good would go from seventeen to nineteen?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's that's one, like I said, that's an option that we could give direction on if there's another direction that's other directors would like to put forth that we could take action on, that's fine, too.
Any other directors want to put an action item on this agenda in regards to the staffing and single role and the medic issue?
Well, as I think many of us have said before, I don't I don't feel that that we have, but I have enough data to know what the other alternatives would be. We have, there are a lot of them. And I don't think we know as also as Jonathan said, what the what the objective is that we're trying to solve. So definitively, at least, and that's why we're gonna have the whole workshop.
Yep. I just wanted to give everybody their opportunity. Before we adjourn, I'd like to take a minute and dedicate this meeting to John Bates, Greg's father, who passed away on Monday.
Oh, sorry.
John's father was a volunteer firefighter in Maraga in the nineteen sixties. He served thirty one years with Dublin Fire. He did a lot to make Maraga a greater place. And John, on behalf of the board, thoughts and condolences are with you and your family, and we're very sorry for your loss, and thank you for your father's service to the community.
Definitely. Our condolences. Really sorry.
At that, I will.
We do. We do have one hand raised for you to open up public comment on this.
Okay. Thank you, Marcia.
Jonathan Goodwin.
Just very quickly, and this is to be clear, this is on the previous item. If you hire an assistant fire marshal, or you call him the deputy fire marshal, whatever it is, when the economy tanks and property values go down, this will be, you know, going by historical preference, historical precedent. This would be one of the first positions terminated to to help make the budget. So I just think the staff and the board should keep in mind that, you know, it is cyclical, the 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 revenues of the district are cyclical. And the cycle doesn't look very propitious right now. So it's just something to keep in mind. Second and last, I just want to reiterate, and Director Jorgens alluded to this, that if you're not basing the staffing of and the equipment, for that matter, of the district apparatus and such on what the district actually needs, I think a lot of people would would fairly conclude you're not doing your job. It's not a question of personal bias. It should not be a question of personal bias. It should be a question of what is needed. That's that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
You know, I really would like to just thank everybody for the meeting and will adjourn the meeting. Marcia, can I get a vote, please?
Do I move that we adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Director Bates?
Aye.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Jex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
President Donner?
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.